Um, so we're gonna start, we're gonna start the meeting. I will, um, sorry, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven oh five. Um, I'm gonna do roll call, so, um, Veronica Jones.
Here.
Billy Malone, here.
Uh, present.
Hannah Petrie.
Present.
Chris O'Malley.
Here.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Doug Coffler. Here. Madeline Barber.
Here.
Alan Peck.
Here.
Amy Lyford.
Here.
Daryl Aranda.
Present.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Dorothy Wong.
Hello.
Nick Mated. Okay, and Diana's here, and we're missing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Daniel and Reggie.
Okay, we're missing just Daniel.
Oh, does Reggie here?
No, um, uh, Daniel's for Reggie.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, okay, so, roll call done, we have, what did I say, we have fourteen, that's a quorum, back to my agenda, hang on. Um, so, we need to approve the meeting agenda, which I distributed. I did not get any changes on it, is there?
Motion to accept.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, that's, Chris has seconded. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Billy, did you wanna?
Yes, yes, sorry, I was checking, I want to add something, thanks for putting it, Nick, I was just checking on my texts to see if Daniel text me. Um, I'd like to end this, and, uh, add a census track report for forty-six oh two at the end.
Okay, hang on. I'm sorry, forty-six.
Oh-two.
Oh-two. Okay, I just added that, eight dot one. Okay, anybody else? All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Great, thanks very much. Okay, I sent out the meeting minutes, I received one, from the April sixth meeting, I have received one change, which was made, to change the setback, um, for an ADU to four feet. Uh, and I didn't get anything else from anybody, is there, did anybody have any other changes or anything?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the agenda, uh, the, sorry, the minutes as amended?
So moved. Okay, one second.
Okay, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Uh, Victoria, you weren't here? You were having a great vacation. Okay. Alright. Um. Okay, the chairman report, the only thing that I have tonight is that we have lost our secretary, um, our recording secretary, and so, if somebody wants to volunteer to be the recording secretary, which means taking, um, roll call and taking, and taking the, um, minutes, which can be done most easily by watching the the meeting back on YouTube with your notes. Um, if somebody would like to, um, volunteer to do that, that would be great. Otherwise, we'll go back to what we did the last time we didn't have a recording secretary, which is, I will put a matrix together and everybody will pick a month.
I like that idea.
Okay. Alright, so I will make a matrix. I will do the minutes for tonight, unless somebody wants to volunteer to do that and get it over with. Apparently not.
I'll do, I'll do it for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Billy. Alright, so I'll put you down for May. And then I'll send the matrix around and everybody tell me what month you wanna do, and we'll put you down, and then you'll be responsible for roll call and for, um, the minutes and for getting any general public comments. Okay? Alright.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Alright, that's really all I have for the, my report this month. A moment, please, sorry, I'm pulling up. Okay, so, we have three, three projects that we are expected to take action on tonight. Um, and the first one of those is Chris O'Malley with his, uh, Pizza of Venice. So, Chris, do you wanna go through what you've done, and if you have any, I don't know if you had any, got any public comment?
Um, no, nothing, nothing for public comment, I've got, I've got some emails, but I don't, like, I can summarize them pretty easily, I don't think I have to.
If you got emails, then you should probably read them.
Oh, you really want me to, all of them? Uh, I wasn't prepared for that, I gotta have to go through my inbox and look, um, but let me just do this part first, and, and then I can enter those into public comment later, if that's alright. Um, so, Pizza of Venice wants us to recommend approval for a, uh, liquor license to sell beer and wine on and off-site. Uh, I distributed roughly two hundred flyers to the homes in the surrounding area, I received seven emails, six in support and one opposed. The six in support generally said, yeah, we, we approve having them, uh, it's great for the neighborhood, good for business, good for sales, they've been good neighbors, let them have it. And the one opposed, um, had some concerns about the fact that there was already a liquor store in the area, uh, they were concerned about the crime that has happened around, um, the two liquor stores there a couple months back. Uh, in, in the time I was traveling around the neighborhood distributing flyers, I spoke to seventeen people face-to-face. Uh, sixteen were supportive of approval, echoing much of the same sentiment as the emails did, and one was opposed, echoing that crime idea and the fact that there was already a liquor store there. Um, I've taken a look at the property, I've spoken to the owner, they appear to be sincere in their desire to just sell some beer and wine along with their pizza, they don't wanna be a liquor distributor or a bar. Um, and so, I, uh, do, do you wanna have discussion first, or would you like me to move something?
No, we should, we should talk about, you should make sure that everybody's aware of, if you have any conditions, if you have anybody that is here representing the restaurant.
I do, I believe Tucker, Tucker Franz here is, is representing.
Yeah, I'm on the call, I can answer anything, uh, that comes up.
So, are there any questions about the project? I have one, which is just that have, do you know if the, if regional planning has gotten a kind of a report from the sheriff's station? Regarding the concern about the crime there?
Uh, I do not, Tucker.
I do not, um, no, usually we get that information in the staff report, and I think we're still probably a month, month and a half out from hearing. So, I, I at least not have heard, um, on any input from PD. Um, if you have followed up with the planner, uh, they may have, but not to my knowledge.
Yeah, Chris, would you put that down to just double check with the planner?
I sure will.
Um.
And you want the, um, really just sheriff's input?
No, you find out from the planner.
Uh-huh.
If they have gotten any information back from the sheriff or are waiting for it, the sheriff should apply to them.
Got it.
If they're not aware, you know, if the planner's not aware that there's, that there could be a problem, or has been a problem in the area, um, they should be aware.
Okay.
You know, you should ta- have a conversation with them about that, um, and see what they're doing. Um, I think, are there, uh, can you remind everybody what the hours are of the restaurant, and what, what hours you're proposing for?
For the CUP, I just kept the Bulgari hours, so that's nine to ten, Sunday through Thursday and nine.
Hey, Chris, Chris and I, I'm sorry, I realized that we actually did get comments from the sheriff's department, I was thinking of a different, uh, I was thinking maybe this was for a different location, but we actually did. Um. I'm just gonna, just give me it quickly, but it says they've responded to nineteen calls for service in this area in the past five years. Uh, one for burglary, uh, business disturbances, audible alarms, illegal dumping. Um. It says all calls have been received in nature, um, and the sheriff, uh, recommended approval of the CUP.
Okay.
And I can forward, I can forward this email along to, uh, Chris.
That'd be great. Okay, so how much the hours?
Uh, hours, uh, in the CUP, and this is open for discussion, of course, it's nine AM to ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, nine AM to eleven PM on Friday and Saturday, with the, uh, last alcohol being served an hour prior to close.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Amy's got a question, Alan has a question, Amy's had her hand up.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna start.
My question is to Tucker. Um, I know, pre-pandemic, there used to be a couple little tiny tables out at the very front of the restaurant. Is there a plan to maintain those tables as in pre-pandemic times, um, for the, for the restaurant?
No, obviously, obviously those tables are there, um, as a result of the alfresco program that has been going on in a lot of places, but once, once everything returns to normal operations, they will not be having those outdoor, they won't be serving on the sidewalk out there, the outdoor seats.
So you'll, so the, the proprietor currently will be okay if we condition that alcohol is not allowed to be served on the sidewalk in front of the location ever?
I mean, yeah, it, I mean, yeah, it's not, it's not part of the scope of the request, so even if, even if you condition it, like, even if you don't condition, it's not gonna matter, I mean.
It's not gonna matter, okay.
Yeah, sure, but I mean, it's not.
It is gonna matter for future.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, there's no plans, once the alfresco programs has, uh, ceased and goes back to regular operations, they don't plan on serving, um, outside.
Okay, so, and, uh, who was next, had a question?
Alan had his hand up.
Go ahead.
Um, my question is probably for you, Chris, um, if you have had a chance to read those emails that came in, the comments, could you characterize them broadly?
Um, yeah, broadly, the, the, the six that were in support were, uh, generally, uh, not, not effuse in their, in their support, but they were, uh, generally supportive of the idea, they, they thought that, uh, that the business should have a chance to be able to sell some beer and wine. Uh, a lot of them said, you know, beer, beer and pizza go really well together. Uh, there was one that said, even though I don't drink, I think others should be able to drink a beer with their pizza.
Not to be, not to be redundant, but Chris, we're gonna ask that you read them into the record, so, if you wanna locate them and read them, then it might
Sure, thing.
satisfy everybody.
Give me just a little while.
Yeah, and Chris, do you know if those, um, are from people that live right in the area, or are they from, okay, okay.
Yeah, those are from the people that are, are immediately surrounding the area.
Perfect, okay, did, did somebody else have a question?
No, but I just wanted to make a quick statement.
Okay, Dorothy, after Billy.
Daniel.
Go ahead, Billy.
That, Daniel has just got home, and he's gonna be joining us shortly.
Okay.
Just giving up.
Dorothy, you're next.
Sure, um, I have two questions, uh, for Tucker. Uh, one is, the hours posted right now, you have twelve to eight, uh, primarily, seven days a week. So do you foresee yourself, uh, going to those extended hours uh, later? Do, do you foresee?
No, the operator doesn't have any intention of extending the hours. Um, we, usually when we do these requests, we, um, try to make them as, as kind of flexible as possible. Um, but obviously, we're, we're, we're fine with the, with the recommended hours, uh, that Chris has, has handed out to us in the, in the conditions of approval. Um, but yeah, as of this point, there's no intention, they close at eight right now, but it's more just to have that flexibility for their, uh, for their operation.
Well, so, do they, do they close at eight every day?
Friday and Saturdays, eight-thirty is.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, go ahead, Victoria.
I was just gonna say, but they open at noon, and so I'm not sure why we're extending the hours of the CUP to nine AM, they don't serve breakfast brunch.
Honestly, Victoria, I just copied and pasted those from Bulgari.
Okay.
So, let's, let's discuss the hours then. If they don't, if they don't open until noon, and they don't expect to open until noon, they're doing lunch and dinner, I would assume, and so, then we can start it at noon.
I can do that.
And then, and then my, my concern would be that Bulgari is in an area that has not had, it's right across from the sheriff's station. So, so it has not, it has not had, um, problems, and so perhaps we wanna think about, you know, doing it until nine-thirty or something, if they're open until eight-thirty and wanna have an hour before they close, I don't know, up to you guys, discuss among yourselves.
Oh, I think Veronica had her hand up for a while.
Oh, Veronica, go ahead.
Yeah, I, that, that police report, the sheriff's report, did it include the shootings that happened there a few months ago? Cause it sounded really, um, not very.
Yeah.
It, it did not depict what really happens up there, that's what I'm saying. It, it really was like a soft report. And for the sheriff to agree to it when one of their own almost got shot there, that seems kinda, you know, it just doesn't seem.
Yeah, I can't really speak to that, I mean, I don't know exactly where the shooting was, obviously you guys have more knowledge of that than I do, but I think, I think when they do this investigation, at least based on what I'm reading, it sounds like, um, that the report is only kind of uh, in regard to this exact property, so basically like this, this kind of strip mall that.
Property, the, the shooter was there at the liquor store. So, it, it was there, so. Just to say, you know, it was not in the area.
That same strip mall, that, yeah. And that, you know, that's the concern about, basically we're adding another liquor store, I know you don't wanna call it a liquor store, but we're adding another liquor store. So.
I don't.
I talked to Sinch, the neighborhood watch group, they're concerned, and they're meeting next Tuesday to discuss what their position is on this. So, because they were not contacted, and they've been in the area for forty, fifty years, and they're really concerned about the, the amount of the flow of liquor and how it flows so freely. So, that.
I think. I think Amy and Dorothy.
So, my point was just, they're not a liquor store, I don't think that we should describe Pizza Venice as a liquor store, it's a restaurant that is asking us to recommend that they be um, allowed to sell beer and wine with their food. So, I just wanted to be clear.
And take it off-site.
And take it off-site.
And I could go there and buy a six-pack of their, their, um, beer, whatever they're selling, and not buy pizza.
We have to buy something.
Yeah, it's cur- it's cur- it's currently conditioned, uh, where you would have to, you're not gonna be able to just go in and buy a six-pack, you would need to buy it in conjunction with, with a pie or something.
Or a slice of pie?
Or, or, or food, or food that you're taking home.
Right.
Tucker, it's, it's Victoria, can you just say who prepared the report on behalf of the sheriff's station?
Sure, it was, um, uh, Marjorie Jacobs, Marjorie L. Jacobs.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's good.
I think Bud has, has her hand up.
Okay, Doc, go ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, so just again, uh, two questions, capacity-wise, so, um, you know, obviously I enjoy the pizza there at Pizza Venice myself, but, um, what is the capacity, uh, inside? Like, what is the restaurant capacity?
That I'm not sure on, on the top of my head, I can, I can check the floor plan quick.
I, I, I can kinda speak to that, I, I, I went, I saw, right now it's zero, uh, cause they don't have any seating. Um, but they did rent out the space next door to their kitchen. Uh, I'm gonna say they probably couldn't have fit much more than maybe twenty-five, thirty people in there. Max.
So that was my other question.
I think that's a C, that it's, it's, it's around twenty-something. Um, one second, I gotta wait here.
Don't worry, while you're doing that, um, so that was my other question, so the liquor store, uh, is there, and then Pizza Venice, and then it looked like there was room for a third business, but is that then part of Pizza Venice?
There's still room for like, the re-businesses, it's a pretty empty strip mall, uh, there used to be like a nail salon or a hair salon or something, but they've gone out of business. And then there's the whole side of the mall behind the liquor store, probably two storefronts, I wanna say. But there's, there's no businesses in there, except for Pizza.
Right, but it could, right.
Could, yeah.
So it's not occupied by Pizza Venice?
No, just the two storefronts.
Okay.
There, there are twenty, there are twenty seats in there. There's about, um, looks like there's just four in that, uh, front area. And then, um, the other eighteen are in the, what Chris was referring to, the the additional tenant space that they expanded to.
Okay, the last question just tied to that is, um, based on, so some, I like to pick mine up when I go, cause I'm not far away, um, but what is the business model, is it fifty percent delivery? I know we're in different times, but, um, is there a projection of how much will be, uh, dining and how much would be, um, percentage-wise at least? Dining.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, and I can, I really can't speak on that, I'm not, I'm just a representative for the operator, so obviously, uh, JV operator would, uh, have a much better idea of what, um, of like, what percentages are, are to go and, and, uh, within the restaurant.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other? What, Doug? You're on mute. Now you're not on mute, but we can't really hear you.
That's where the noise was coming from.
Is your microphone on?
Sounds like it's broken.
Doug. Try again, what's going on? You're all the way in San Francisco.
Type in the chat box.
You're all the way in San Francisco, yeah, you can type in the chat box.
Yeah. While he's doing that, Nick.
Just wanna quick go on record, while I might agree with the opinions about what it could possibly turn into, I do wanna object to the depiction of it being a liquor store. Um, again, I might agree with the, the idea of what it could become, but I don't think we should be saying that when it clearly is a restaurant that sells liquor.
Uh, okay, they, they have a liquor license, they are selling liquor, and it's leaving the, it's only wine and beer, I get that, but it's, it's leaving the premises, so.
A liquor store is very specific, it's not a liquor store.
Um, did anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Um, I, I would like to say that I'm very concerned that Sinch is, has not weighed in on this, Veronica, I, I don't know how you feel about, if they don't meet till next week, then we're gonna get bombarded, well, we won't be able to get their feedback until the town council meeting.
They only meet once a month, and they, um, I got two calls from the, the one who runs Sinch, and then from Carlotta. And they were concerned, and they only recently, I guess, um, I did report it to them last, at their last meeting, but it's the same night as our executive committee. So I kinda just ran in and out, and so they didn't know that it was happening now, and so, they're, they're gonna talk about it, and they will either, um, approve, you know, be, uh, in approval of it, or they will have the reason why they're not approved, they're unhappy about it.
Okay, so, I, I guess I need to ask the committee, I know what my recommendation is, but, um, who feels that it's, my concern is, right, that we're gonna go through the exercise tonight, we'll come up with what we decide, if we are comfortable that what we decide will cover all of the concerns that Sinch may have, then we can go ahead and vote on it tonight, and then be able to address the Sinch concerns at the ATC meeting, which will be the final time to look at the project. Or, we can table this until the June meeting, let Sinch meet, get their feedback, make sure that whatever we're doing, we're comfortable that we've, you know, that we have answers one way or another to what Sinch wants, and then vote on it in June. But, that's, you know, those are the options. We have, we have to, we have to know that if we don't, if we do vote tonight, which is, you know, we can do, that we're gonna have to be ready for whatever comes up at the ATC meeting that may change our project, or send it back to land use or something, I don't know, there's lots of things, Daniel, go ahead.
I guess the question would be, what conditions that we have on the project array would be, I mean, I mean, are there conditions that Sinch would ask for above and beyond what, what we've already proposed as conditions?
Well.
Because, because, I, 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 I'm not, you know, I, I'm, I'm in favor of letting them have an alcohol license for, for serving, you know, along with food there, obviously not separate sales, but my concern is, is they're just gonna come back and say, no, we don't want it there, okay, well, that's nice, you don't want it from, it, it's nice you don't want it there, but, you know, most restaurants, especially now, need an alcohol license to survive.
Yeah.
And, um, it is a major, you know, it's a, a major component of their, uh, survivability today, especially after COVID. And so, if they come back and say, no, we don't want it there, well, what's the land use is, you know, what's gonna change? It's like, great, you don't want it there, but the opinion of the committee, and I might be in the minority, but the opinion of the committee is, you know, yes, we should allow this here along with this long list of conditions and restrictions.
Right.
And so, the, I guess that's why I'm like, is there something that, if, they're probably just gonna come back and say, no, we don't want it there, okay, well, no, we don't want it there, is not, not a constructive, you know, well, what would make this acceptable, what is?
So, let me, let me say this, Chris, what we ordinarily do when we're having a meeting like this is that we have all of the conditions read to the committee. Um, that can, it, it would be good, I think, if you would do that ahead of time, although you could do it in your motion, and then we could have discussion after that. The biggest thing that I think is important in that area is to make sure that we're not just blanketly giving hours out, you know, the hours of operation.
Sure.
So, maybe there's a shortened timeframe for hours of operation that will support Pizza Venice and what they find they need, they've been in business for a while, they should know what hours work for them. Um, and I'm sure that, you know, after a certain hour, things sort of close up, so, um, anyway, that, what, what gives a better idea to the whole committee is all of the conditions. So, I have, Victoria, go ahead.
Uh, Chris, do we, can someone just answer or address the hours of the liquor store that are there, that's there now? What hours are there, do we know? And do we know, Diane, when that liquor, or Veronica even, when that liquor store CUP comes up? Because I, I happen to believe, and, and Veronica would, would, please chime in, but the liquor store is a bigger issue. And, but for the liquor store, this particular CUP would not be as concerning, but the liquor stores exist there might make this more concerning to this group.
Veronica, to answer your question, they are open seven days a week from eight AM to eleven PM. Veronica, to answer your question, they are open seven days a week from eight AM to eleven PM.
That's the liquor store, okay.
That is the liquor store.
Say it again, eight AM to eleven PM. Okay, Veronica, go ahead.
And I just wanna say this, um, um, just to address what Daniel said. And I understand what you're saying about Sanch, maybe they will just come back and say, we don't want it. But they do live in the area, and they do have the right to say that they don't want it. I think that that's what you need to understand is that they live over here with it, whereas you live. Not as close to it.
Yeah, and, and they're, they're open to that opinion, so.
Back and say, I don't like this, I don't like this, I don't like this, but I like this and this. I don't know what they'll say.
Okay, so let's do, let's do this. Let's figure out. Okay, number one, as sort of an aside, Veronica, maybe we can look up the liquor license of the liquor store. And we can see when that's coming up, when this, and see when the CUP is coming up, and. We do have the option when these try to renew of changing, you know, recommending change to the hours based on. You know, what's been going on in the area. Okay, so then if Chris can, if we can agree on. Maybe some shortened hours, not the same as, um, Bulgari, but what, what will work for that, what will work for Pizza Venice? And then read the conditions, that would be great, and then we can have a motion and vote.
I know, um, Amy, Amy had her hand up for a while, Billy's got his hand up, can we just take those last two, please, and then I'll read the.
Sure. Amy, go ahead.
Okay, so I was gonna suggest that, uh, it seems a reasonable hour timeframe might be twelve PM. Or eleven AM, something like that, so they can get in there and get ready, eleven thirty to ten PM. Okay, so it's a little bit less than the, it's, it's, it's a more traditional restaurant hour, if they'd be okay with that. It seems like a reasonable time, but I also wanted to say regarding our process. I feel like we should not put off a vote on something that we have an action item on, because a group. Hasn't had a chance to meet yet. They still have an opportunity to make their views known before the whole town council meets. And we can take that information into account, because we're making a recommendation to the council. And then the council will make a recommendation, so Sanch will have its opportunity, but I feel, um, it would be kind of. Undermining the process that we've laid out with all the information that we have. Um, to wait on a group that hasn't taken up the issue in our timeline.
Um, Billy?
Yeah, um, one other thing I wanted to note is that we've used the, uh, recent conditions of Bulgari. As, as a stepping stone or, or standard for this one with some changes. But I would say, and I don't have it in front of me, and I do apologize for that, I should have looked up, but it just came to me right now. But probably, with the off sales correct, probably Bulgari would be, it would be a better one to compare it to. But as far as restaurants in that area are concerned, we recently gave, uh, Mo- Motors, uh, Lincoln was given a, uh. A restaurant license to serve alcohol. And that might be a better example to use regarding hours of operations and everything else. As it is closer to this area, I do understand it's one major street away still, but it is closer to this area than Bulgari's. And, um, I'm not aware of any issues that Motors had. Uh, regarding, um, law enforcement or other concerns with them serving alcohol with, with a restaurant. So I just think that maybe if anyone has the information, that Motors might be a better one to use as a standard for operation hours.
And are they, they serving, is that a full bar or is that just beer and wine?
Their hours of operation are eight AM to ten PM, the applicants ensure the property will be maintained, secure and well lit. Alcoholic beverages will only be sold in conjunction with meals. Alcohol will only be served for onsite consumption and may not be allowed to be removed from the premises for any reason. Alcohol will not be sold to those under legal drinking age, the restaurant employees will continuously monitor alcohol storage areas. Distilled spirits will not be served alone, also known as shots. Alcoholic beverages containing distilled spirits will only be served in cocktails or similar type of mixed drink. Employees will refuse to sell to patrons who appear intoxicated. All employees will be given proper training in these processes, and the owners will ensure the compliance of training by all employees. The applicants agree to comply with all applicable laws, regulations and rules imposed or enforced by any government entity. So they're.
They're, they had a full bar license.
Yeah, they have a full bar and no, no offsite retail.
Cause they were doing margaritas.
Okay.
And no offsite.
Yeah, so I think Bulgari is a better.
Yeah, well, and, and Bulgari, that one I had based on, because I helped write that one, I had based on. Yeah, C, CUPs elsewhere in the county.
Right.
And, and our grocery outlet, uh, uh, one, so we had additional conditions, our kind of standard elsewhere in the county.
So, so Chris, do you wanna read the conditions, and then if we can settle on hours? If that's the only thing that's still open for discussion, and then we can.
I also found all those emails, when would you like to put those in?
Yeah.
You want me to do that after?
Either way.
Either way, let me just do the emails first, so I can get them out of the way. Uh, here's one from Lisa Diaz, uh, I live in the Altadena, I live in Altadena, and I fully support the recommendation for POV to be approved for a beer and wine license. Small businesses like POV are the lifeblood to communities like Altadena, and granting them the ability to grow their business in this way will help to ensure their success and longevity. Uh, this one is from Margaret Griffith. Uh, I am an Altadena resident and support POV receiving a beer and wine license. Uh, third one here is from Kenneth Haber. I would like to support the request for a beer and wine license for the restaurant Pizza of Venice in these difficult times. Anything that we can do to support local businesses to stay in business is a worthwhile endeavor, please grant your approval. Uh, this one is from Michael Holland. Uh, I'm hoping you'll be supporting the beer and wine license request from Pizza in Venice. We have been patrons of theirs since they opened, and they have been responsible neighbors. I think they have earned the opportunity to serve alcohol with their food. I hope you will consider their application and support their efforts. Uh, this is from Rosalina Rodriguez. I find it concerning that additional places will have beer and wine available, there's a liquor store in the same shopping center, a block north of the liquor store. A bar a block south and additional liquor store on Woodbury. Not to add the markets and gas station, I think is what she meant. Uh, recently, we've had several shootings and disturbances in the area, having an AA center indicates we already have a problem with alcohol in the area. The shopping complex is not large enough to accommodate the influx of traffic in and out of the site. We also have the park nearby, and it is now. On any day, especially on weekends, several adults drink alcohol, trashing the park and adjacent streets. I'm in favor of adding more licenses to sell beer and wine, what we need is more recreation areas that are safe for the residents. Uh, this one is from Rosemary Brandenburg. Uh, good morning, I am writing in support of the request of Pizza of Venice Restaurant for Beer and Wine License. This is an excellent, well-run business, and this license will increase their ability to be profitable. It is in the community entrance, interest, sorry, that Pizza of Venice thrive. I'd rather POV have these sales than continue to have clients BYO from the nearby liquor stores. I don't personally drink alcohol, but many do enjoy wine or beer with their meal. I see no reason not to allow this license. Uh, this one is from Anna Louise Bannon. Yes, we would love to be able to be served beer or wine when we go to Pizza of Venice. We love the place, and being able to get something we'd like to drink would only make it more pleasant to go there. Beer and wine served on premises seldom results in the kind of nuisance calls that places like the liquor store get. And that is it.
Okay, great. So now, do you wanna read your conditions?
Sure will. Uh, recommended conditions, I've already changed this from, from, from eight AM to noon, since that's what we said, but we can talk about the hours later. Number one, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from noon to ten PM, uh, from Sunday to Thursday. And noon to eleven PM on Friday and Saturday, uh, no alcohol should be served at the site beyond ten PM from Sunday to Thursday and eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. Any unfinished, unfinished serving already being consumed at the time shall be consumed within sixty minutes of the latest permitted time to serve alcohol at the site. Security cameras shall be installed inside the restaurant and outside facing the outdoor dining area and surrounding area. Video footage shall be retained for at least one month and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. Three, a monitored, a monitored security alarm shall be installed on the premises. Four, eh, the permittee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages on the exterior of any structure. On the subject property, including windows, walls, fences or similar structures. Number five, all regulation of the state of California prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages to minors shall be strictly enforced. Number six, the permittee, the permittee, sorry, shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxi cab companies. At or near the cashier or similar public service area, such telephone numbers shall be visible by and available to the general public. Seven, there should be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the designated areas of the subject facility. The permittee shall be instructed, uh, sorry, shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages regarding this restriction. Uh, eight, the permittee shall develop and implement a designated driver program, i.e. a free soft drink or coffee to a designated driver of a group. The permittee shall submit the program to the director of planning for approval prior to the approval of the CUP. All employees shall be trained on the program. A printed two-sided card explaining this program shall be placed on all tables in the restaurant, or a notice regarding the program shall be printed on the menu. Number nine, uh, no servers of alcoholic, oh, sorry, all servers of alcoholic beverages maybe, must be at least eighteen years of age. Number ten, no dancing or dance floor is authorized in or outside the premises. Number eleven, there shall be no music or other noise audible beyond the restaurant premises. The restaurant will comply with all LA County Noise Orderance provisions. Number twelve, not less than fifty-one percent of the income from the business enterprise shall be derived from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. The business owner shall at times maintain records which reflect separately the gross sale of food and the gross sale of alcoholic beverages. Said records shall be available to the Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning, the Department of Alcoholic Beverages Control. And the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on Demand. Thirteen, the permittee may hold a happy hour drink specials, specials or similar promotions from three to seven PM, seven days a week, only in conjunction with food. Number fourteen, food service shall be continuously provided during operating hours. Fifteen, no service of alcoholic drinks will be done in any disposable cups of any type. Sixteen, the outdoor seating area shall be clearly defined and follow all ABC rules for outdoor areas. Seventeen, a trash can shall be provided in the outdoor area and that regularly. Eighteen, there shall be no display of alcoholic beverages from coolers or refrigeration other than restaurant-style coolers. Nineteen, there shall be no sales of alcohol from an ice tub, champagne buckets are exempted for onsite consumption. Twenty, the permittee and all managers and designated employees of the establishment who directly serve or in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages. Shall participate in the LEAD licensee education on alcohol and drugs program. All new designated employees shall be required to intend, the licensee shall display a certificate or plaque. In a publicly accessible area of the establishment such as the lobby, indicating that they have participated in the program. Proof of completion of, of the facilities training program by employees, the licensee and all managers shall be available upon request. Twenty-one, alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption shall be sold to customers only when food is ordered and consumed. Uh, twenty-two, the following shall apply to any alcoholic sales for offsite consumption. A, only beer and wine may be sold for offsite consumption. B, all sales for offsite consumption must be with food. C, there shall be no wine, with the exception of wine coolers, sold in containers of less than three hundred and seventy-five milliliters. D, wine cooler shall not be sold in less than four-pack quantities. E, malt beverages, uh, e.g. beer, ale, stout and malt liquor shall not be sold in a bottle or container greater than seven hundred and fifty milliliters. Or twenty-five point four ounces. F, no miniatures of any type may be sold. G, all beverages must be sold unopened and in the original manufacturer container. H, beer in containers of sixteen ounces or less shall not be sold by a single container, but must be sold in, in manufacturer prepackaged multi-unit quantities. I, alcohol sold for offsite consumption may not be consumed onsite. And J, staff shall not open any alcohol sold for offsite consumption. And I would just like one more time to credit council or committee member Harlow for putting that together for Bulgari's. It's, it's a very comprehensive list.
Okay, so you have two items in there that are about, um, outside dining.
I say we just keep them, just in case, uh, we never know if he's gonna put outside, there's no plans for it now, but we don't know who's gonna move in there next.
Victoria? I just wanted to interrupt to let you know that Jamie Woolner, the proprietor, is going to join the meeting.
Okay.
He just texted me.
Okay, so. Started the discussion, asking if they were gonna use outside seating, the answer was no, they're not. So.
So, so my suggestion is.
No.
Jamie's here if we wanna pose that question to him.
Hey guys, sorry I'm late, I just left POV.
What's up, Jamie?
Okay, Daniel? But.
Oh, oh, my suggestion is we remove, if they're not planning on, thinking in the future, if, if. Jamie and the POV team have no plans on using outside seating anymore. Then we should remove and say there is no outsides, you know, there's no exterior service like there was at Bulgari. Because in the future, you know, we wouldn't necessarily wanna allow that either, right?
Right.
So, now, I know with COVID, and I know some of that was overruled by the state, so, just something to consider.
So, I would just say, uh, would you guys be opposed to considering what it would be like if we. Rented out that patio in that unused space next to us at a further date to do like a, kinda like an outdoor. Garden type, almost like the Earth Cafe style outdoor patio, real lush.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what we were discussing, Jamie, is if we wanna put the rules about the outdoor, in case you wanted to offer that in the future.
So the, so when, when you did Bulgari, Bulgari was required to have. Dividers around the seating and, right?
Well, so, so the out, so the ABC requires it does, uh, not enclosed, but. A designated area for service, so if, if it was to be out in front, let's just say you didn't rent that yet, Jimmy. Let's say you wanted to offer out in front, kinda like you did, that would actually have to be divided off with like planters and stands, like Bulgari.
And, and, and ABC, I think, would have to authorize that it be, I think.
Yeah, it has to be mapped out on the, the alcohol license and everything.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what level of difficulty we're gonna face to do that project. I just wanna kinda bring it up with you guys, just in case we decide to take it in that direction, and. You know, if, if we can put something in there that says that it's okay, it might help us kind of skip another, you know. Twenty thousand dollar CUP filing just to get a little patio thing going.
And, and you would serve alcohol out there?
Oh, yeah, we would want it to be like our, our patio, essentially.
Does, Jamie, does that have, oh, sorry, Diane.
No, go ahead, Daniel.
Does that how, is that, um, so one of the things that Bulgari had issues with is because it's open to essentially the public, because it's. Right away, is that area completely enclosed, meaning the only opening would, would be like a gate or something you control?
Yeah, so the way the property is right now, um, there's no public access whatsoever, even from the front. Door area, there's, uh, a driveway, but then a gate that hits right before the patio, so.
So it would be controlled access?
It would be controlled access, and, um, you know. That's, that's something I would really like to do, because as it is right now, it's gonna be really tight in there. Um, not, I'm not even speaking on COVID, I'm just saying, you know, our seating capacity is just tight. And I would like to leave room for some expansion if our market, the Altadena market decides. Hey, we really wanna be here, and there's not enough room for us.
Do you have seating for twenty now, Jamie? Is that the?
I don't know exactly what the tires say right now, but yeah, it's not a lot, you know, it's not a lot.
Sorry, how many people would that patio, um, if you built it up the way you wanted to, how many people would it accommodate?
It looks like it's about the size of our new proposed dining room, roughly. It's just, I'm just eyeballing it, I don't have any kind of plan on it, um, so.
Yeah, so. As I say, committee has a choice, we can either leave those in or exclude those, and they would have to come back, as Jamie said, in the future for. Additional CUP, most likely.
Diane, is that what it would require? So, just so I understand, and I, um. I want us to move forward on this, because I do get that we, this is a long process as it is. But if we were to move forward with just conditions on the restaurant, on the CUP for the restaurant as it is. And they were to be able to manifest this outdoor dining area. Would it be like an amendment to the CUP to allow the liquor sales from this CUP to extend to that? Or would it be wholly new?
Well, and also the same for the alcohol license, Victoria, I don't know.
That's the bigger issue.
Right, so the, that's kind of a bigger issue, yeah, the alcohol license. They'll designate, you have to map out where that alcohol is gonna be, and tell them, and they'll. And they'll, um. You know, I don't know, you said the Altadena market wants to go in there, and so then would you be planning on?
Oh, I'm sorry, not the farmer's market. I meant, like, the community as a, as a consumer market.
Oh, oh.
Like, if, if they're demanding more than we have capacity for, I would love to be able to, A, serve that demand and create that service to the community and B, profit from it, so.
Chris, do you wanna read those? I think it's two, two conditions about.
Let me, uh, get you out of full screen here, just 'cause I like seeing your faces. Uh, so it's, uh, condition sixteen, uh, outdoor seating area shall be clearly defined and follow all A B C rules for outdoor areas. And seventeen, a trash can shall be provided in the outdoor area and emptied regularly.
I'll double down and give you two trashcans.
That's actually a big problem.
All alcohol has to be, I don't know if, I don't know if Jamie heard all that, but the alcohol has, has to be in, not in plastic.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I went ahead and read all those, um, prior to this, just to familiarize myself with it. And all of it is, to me, very common sense. And, uh, and I, I know I received a copy of the Bulgari one, it seems very similar to that as well.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Diane? We, we conditioned the cup specifically for Bulgari because he was so, there was such an issue about the, him not ever serving his liquor in those cups. So is that, does that need to extend to this is my question? You're not gonna be, you're gonna be serving single, single, you, single, uh, serving alcohol, not by draft?
Well, the other, oh.
I'm sorry, just to answer that, Victoria, um, so, I think to start with, just because the equipment's so expensive with the draft stuff, we'll probably start with like, you know, craft beer. Um, but the way the license works, um, you can't sell singles to go. So you would just crack open the bottle and pour it in a glass if it was for here. And if it was to go, it'd have to be like a designated pack of whatever the manufacturer, um, put it out as.
Right.
Yeah, the Vic, Victoria, the other reason we condition that, um, is we don't want, we don't want them serving in plastic containers that could easily be walked away from the outdoor area. Um, and so having glass or glass, wine glasses, glass beer glasses, it's, it's less likely somebody will just walk off and start walking down the street with those, right?
You don't want like a Mardi Gras attitude, or, uh.
Right.
A Mardi.
We don't want red sole cups.
So we have one last thing that I just wanna make sure that Jamie, were you here when we were discussing the hours?
He wasn't.
Um, I just popped in.
Okay, so. I don't know where we landed with hours.
What, what kind of hours are you looking for, Jamie?
So what you guys sent me was agreeable, totally agreeable.
That was way too much.
Way too much.
So, we, we were.
We sent eight A. We sent eight A M, so the question is, do, is it really more likely to, I mean, your current hours are twelve to eight and twelve to eight thirty? So, you know, does twelve to nine satisfy, twelve to ten satisfy?
So, I mean, I think the only way that it's, that the flexibility helps us is like, if it's the World Cup and it's early in the morning, but we don't plan on having regular hours of serving. Um, we would like to push it a little later than nine, if that's okay. Um, you know, if that wouldn't bother you guys, just because, you know, I don't know where the business is going, but I go out to dinner sometimes at nine o'clock, so, you know, and if I wanna have a beer, you know?
We, it, it's an hour after closing, right? Up to an hour, up to sixty minutes after closing?
Yes.
They can consume what they've had.
So. Wait, I think.
No, it's, no, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, I think the way it's written here is that, um, they're allowed to serve until a certain time and then any unfinished serving already being consumed shall be consumed within sixty minutes of the latest permitted time. So I guess the latest permitted time is nine, they have to finish that by ten and they can't serve anything between nine and ten. Is that right, Dan?
Do we, yeah.
So, the way that, the way that you guys wrote it, it was, it, the end time was ten o'clock every night, except for Friday and Saturday. It was eleven, I wanna say, just from memory.
From, just to be clear, Jamie, those, those were just draft times that I threw at the committee and we're discussing them right now, so there's nothing.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, I understand, it wasn't like an agreement set in stone. Yeah, that, I mean, we were asking for midnight, thinking that we probably wouldn't get it, to be honest. So, you know, I would be thrilled if we could do ten and eleven. Um, you know, if you guys aren't opposed to that, that would be, that would give us a lot of flexibility. I don't think we would jump right into those hours right off the bat. But if there's a demand there, if there's people who wanna do that, if there is, you know.
Right, so let me, let me say two things. One thing is, Sylvia, I know, I see you and you're next. The other thing is that we went through, just as, as a point of information, a bunch of years ago, we went through a thing with Mint Leaf Restaurant. And they swore they needed to have super-long hours and they were gonna do brunch and they were gonna do none. Yeah, they were gonna be open late because the people were gonna go to the movies in downtown Pasadena and wanna come to their restaurant afterwards. And none of that happened, none, 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 none.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure that I get, I get the flexibility and we can talk about that. I don't wanna take a lot more time with this, but I, I do think that we have concerns. Before you came on, we were talking about the shooting that happened there not too long ago. We have concerns about the liquor store there, we have, there's a lot of concerns that if you, you know, know that you're gonna maybe wanna stay open a bit later, we can accommodate that through this, but not super-long hours.
Yeah, I mean, Diane, it sounds like you're, you're just kinda worried that this is gonna be a mint leaf, a mint leaf situation where there's a lot of promising going on and not a lot of delivering on the service that, you know, they're saying they want to deliver. And I guess what I would say is, and then, and then on top of that, the safety issue of just having people here, families here later, and maybe they're drinking, maybe somebody else is at the liquor store, they're unsavory, something happens.
So.
Um, and I'm thinking more in terms of probabilities, like what are the probabilities that Altadena becomes Silver Lake and we're the only restaurant that can't be open to service the nightlife that happens in Altadena? I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but I, you know, we built this business thinking that that was gonna happen. And there's restaurants opening up in town now and, you know, I just, I kinda don't wanna get left behind when we've invested so many years in the community, kind of building up to this moment.
Right, so what do you, let me, we did a whole thing with Altadena, what was that called? Something, Altadena Marketplace or something up?
Yeah, 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 the marketplace, sure.
They wanted that open from six A M to two, two A M and.
Yeah, I mean, we're not serving liquor, it's not that kind of a thing, you know, we don't need those kinda hours.
Yeah, okay, so, and by the way, they never opened either. So, um, so the, so what, if you're really thinking about your business and now, how many people you have coming in at night, you're, you're open for certain hours because that's when you can sell pizza, right? I mean, when.
So, we shrunk the hours for COVID, but we were open till ten on Friday and Saturday without beer and wine and without a real dine-in crowd that we, and we were never able to cultivate the type of dining crowd that we wanted to because A, we didn't have the dining, we just had that little space that we have now. So this whole thing is going to basically almost triple the capacity that we had before. And we're gonna have restrooms, so this is what we had always intended to do as a business in Altadena. It wasn't to just be a to-go pizza shop, we wanted to be a real restaurant because we're serving real restaurant food and, so, yeah.
You think you'd be open until ten, is that what?
At least, yeah, we would like to be open as late as we can, it's just, as a small business, it's an investment, it's more staff and it's something that we just kinda have to build back up to, because we used to be open till ten. So with COVID, we shrunk the hours way down just to save money. Um, but, but yeah, we would like to get back up to maybe even midnight, you know, delivery only. Not saying we're gonna be selling beer and wine at that time, but, you know, just to make money on food. We were thinking of having late-night delivery as something that we could have in the future, you know, stay open an extra four hours and. Um, but I'd like to be able to build up to that, maybe start at ten o'clock with beer and wine and, uh, maybe push it to midnight. But Friday and Saturday, serving till eleven, that would be really great. And then I think, you know, since the other nights are school nights, serving till ten would work really well for us. And it would make the whole thing just super worth our while, it would make us really happy and it would help the business a lot.
Sylvia.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Um, quick question, Chris, in the emails that you read to us, did any of those, uh, emails have addresses? They sound like they were from Altadena residents, not necessarily residents who are close to the proximity of.
I just canvassed the area around Pizza of Venice, so if somehow my flyers got to the other side of town and they decided to email me, um, that would shock me, but no, they did not have any, uh, physical addresses.
Diane.
Dan.
Oh, Diane, what, what was the hours on Motus? I'm sorry, I didn't write that down earlier.
Hang on. Eight to ten.
Eight to ten. Every day of the week?
Right.
And I see Amy had noted in the chat that Ale House is actually open till one thirty A M? How'd that happen? So, that's unusual, so, the, uh.
Uh, I think Dorothy's got her hand up.
Go ahead, Dorothy. You're on mute.
Hi, yes, sorry, just hitting my buttons there. Um, so just to, to understand, uh, Jamie, then you're gonna be re, your plan is to, uh, sort of expand your dining room area, are you renting out? Cause like the liquor store kinda parallels Town and Country, parallels Fair Oaks? And then that, that structure then connects kinda to your kinda back structure? Are you planning to think your dining room will take some of that area? I guess it used to be a beauty.
So, so the beauty salon is still there, it's still in business. Um, actually, we've been renting the space next to POV for almost five years now, just paying rent on it in anticipation of this dining room expansion and getting beer and wine. So we've invested a lot just to get to this space in rent. And, um, and that's, that's the first place we'd like to expand to. And then, and then, yeah, having the outdoor thing, um, after that, if, if things go well, if.
Okay.
You know, if it's, if it's a situation, you know, yeah.
Yeah, so let's, we, let's put a pin in it on something. Make, Chris, you can make a, recommend your motion with that in it and.
Well, uh, frankly, uh, you know, um, Amy's kind of made the motion twice here uh, to adjust those hours from twelve to ten on the weekend, or weekdays and eleven on the weekends. And, um, I think that's fair, uh, I'll second that.
Well, that's not really a motion.
Not really, okay, so, okay, I need that we amend the conditions to.
Right, amend that condition.
Amend CUP condition one to read, uh, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from twelve P M to ten P M from Sunday to Thursday and twelve P M to eleven P M on Friday and Saturday.
Any chance we can get a ten A M instead of a twelve? Would it be completely out of the question, just in case we wanna do brunch or something like that?
Is that the weekend?
I, yeah, that would be fine, yeah, even just the weekend, ten, ten o'clock, you know? Omelets and champagne, pizza-flavored omelets, mimosas, bellinis.
Yeah, I, I would say definitely like eleven A M on the weekends, I, I eat lunch early, so noon's kinda late in my book, so.
What time do you have brunch, Daniel?
Somebody put a pin in it.
I don't eat brunch.
We need to.
Anti-brunch sentiment.
Make, go ahead, Chris, pick your times.
All right, let's say eleven on the weekends.
Okay.
So, uh, motion to amend, condition number one, to read the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from twelve P M to ten P M from Sunday to Thursday and from eleven A M to eleven P M on Friday and Saturday, um.
I just wanna throw it out before you guys put this on here.
It needs a second.
Well, we're not really.
We haven't even motioned, we, there's zero motions.
We're just working on, we're working on conditions right now.
I, I think the eleven A M.
He keeps saying motion to amend, so I just wanna get the language clear so we're all.
All right.
Okay, we got the timing, right.
Okay, so, so the issue is, we just said eleven A M on the weekends, Chris just said eleven A M on Friday and Saturday. It really should be eleven A M on Saturday and Sunday and noon on Friday.
Jesus, okay, that's gonna be a pain in the ass, uh.
Can I, may I just say, I just wanna put it out there, this will basically put a pin on the idea of us ever opening earlier than noon. Because ha- having, being open and having someone come in for lunch and not be able to order a beer is, you know, that's like a really awkward conversation for my staff to have with a customer, to have them wait. So that, that's basically fixing our store hours, so I would just say, I think it makes the most sense. And I, I don't know, would it really be doing any harm if we just called it eleven A M across the board? Cause this is gonna fix our hours permanently, basically, to, to noon on those days. And, you know, we might wanna open an hour, an hour earlier for lunch and it's just, it would dissuade us from doing that, practically speaking.
So your proposal, Jamie, is eleven A M, uh, Sunday through Saturday and closing at ten.
No, Veronica, I mean, Victoria, every, every day, eleven o'clock.
So it'd be eleven to ten on the weekdays and then, and then eleven to eleven on Friday and Saturday.
No, Saturday and Sunday.
That's what it.
Saturday and Sunday. It would, yeah, it would be eleven, eleven to ten, Sunday through Thursday, and then eleven to eleven Friday and Saturday. Okay.
Oh.
And I think that makes the most practical.
So not open on Sundays.
Off for breakfast.
Got it.
Eleven, yeah, so, forget brunch. I'm, I'm willing to let brunch die if we can make a deal.
All right.
What?
So right now, as of right now, as of right now, it reads, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from eleven A M to ten P M on Sunday through Thursday and eleven A M to eleven P M on Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so now, Chris, if you wanna make a motion.
I will make a motion.
That, that, let me, hang on, let me just tell you, what you can do is you can say, um, with the conditions as read and amended, right, we're leaving the, we're leaving the two in for outdoor dining?
Mm-hmm. That is correct, so, so I move on project number R P P L two zero two zero 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 nine eight three four a conditional use permit to allow the sale and dispensing of beer and wine for on- and off-site consumption of Pizza of Venice, twenty-five forty-five North Fair Oaks Avenue. Uh, that we recommend approval of the CUP with the conditions as read and amended.
Is there a second? Nick, you're second? Nick's seconding, okay.
Okay.
All those, all those in favor of approving the project or recommending approval to the, to the A T C of the project with the conditions as read and amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, uh, Veronica, are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, one, one, I'm sorry, can we do that again? Opposed? Veronica? Anybody else? Okay, got it.
What about the abstentions?
I, I'm just going there, I don't know, anybody abstaining? Okay, Daryl, Alan, is that it? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Cool.
So, so the plan.
And this, can I understand, so now, from eleven A M till eleven A M at night, I can go buy pizza and beer and take it home?
Yes, eleven P M, yeah.
Eleven P M.
Right.
Eleven A M to eleven P M, okay.
On Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Saturday.
On Sunday through Thursday, eleven to ten P M.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, is, is, that's not actually correct, isn't it? Because, um, if, if it's going to eleven, that's including the sixty minutes to drink, so therefore it would be eleven. So actually, you can't actually purchase after ten o'clock.
No, 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 no.
No.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
The last, last round is eleven o'clock. Doors shut at midnight.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right.
And preferably at eleven thirty, but. And preferably at eleven thirty, but.
Yeah, all right, okay, so, um, thank you, everyone. Okay, so now we're going to.
Diane, can you just let Jamie know?
Yeah, Jamie, we'll, we'll review this, two things. One is, we'll review this two weeks from tonight.
Like, we're developing technology on Megaphone to, like, allow us to.
Tucker, thank you, okay, um, the, um, I'm sorry. We will, we will, that, the Altadena Town Council, where we'll review this in two weeks at their meeting. Um, and we'll do us, us, you know, most of the people that are on here are on Town Council. Um, and so it, there'll be a couple of different people and, and Chris will make sure that those people are aware of the, of what, you know, the discussion was and what we came up with. And then the other thing, though, that you should be aware of is that there's a community group called Satch. Who has been, that, that group has been in existence for what, like fifty years or something, long time. They have not, they meet once a month and their meeting is, is coming a week from tonight. And they will have some feedback, um, for us at the ATC meeting, um, in two weeks. And so we'll, we'll, Veronica will try to keep in touch with them and see how that goes. They are.
And Jamie, you may want to attend their meeting and talk.
Yeah.
I'll get you the information and you can.
Yeah, tho- that would be great. Thank you, um, you know, thank you for that idea of getting me in touch with them and getting me to that meeting. That sounds, that sounds great.
Yeah, so Veronica, you'll take care of that to get him hooked up with them. Okay, good. Um, okay, so that's good for you then, Jamie, you're done.
Thank you guys, I really appreciate it. Bye.
Okay, so, Brad, you're up. We're gonna do the, um, the, uh, cell site. Um, swapping like for like. Um, we did go through this as a presentation last month. Um, there was a question that Daniel had about the number of parking places there and whether they, uh, uh, well. So I sent you out the original, um, conditions and, um. Saw when I read those conditions, I saw that there's actually a component of this that's down in the parking lot. The changes are all happening on the roof, so there's nothing visible really to the public that's happening. Um, down in the parking lot or anything. Daniel had a concern about the number of parking places. Because Armin's Market is using up parking places for things other than cars. So, but, um, he went and found that they were in compliance with that. If they're, if they get to a point where they're not, then we'll report. They have their own CUP and liquor CUP for Armin's. And so, um, you know, we can go take care of that with that. So are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Oh, nothing.
Okay. Are there any questions on this one? Discussion, whatever, okay, so, um, Sylvia. You have a motion?
I do, I'll go ahead and read it. In the matter of PRJ two thousand twenty dash zero zero two two eight seven dash five. Slash R P P L two zero two zero 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 seven one one three. Located at eighteen seventy-three Allen Avenue, Armin's Market. AT&T is upgrading the site by swapping like-for-like antennas on an existing rooftop. I move that the land use committee recommend to the Altadena Town Council that they recommend approval, including a continuation of the existing conditions. As written in two thousand fourteen.
I second that.
Okay, so Chris seconded it. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
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 Opposed? I think that was everybody opposed. Abstain? Okay, great, thanks very much. Brad, we'll see you in two weeks as well.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate you.
All right.
Have a good one.
Next, um, is, oh wait, I'm sorry, that, I'm changing documents, I went to modus, okay. Um, the next one is the seventeen seventy-three Oxford Avenue. Um, we, uh, did, and, and Rita is here to answer any additional questions. I would like to say, to start with, that after much discussion with regional planning. Um, and with Rita and, um, I think that the only, um, that regional planning. We can't be, be making a judgment on things that were built in nineteen fifty-three. Um, and so what we can be talking about is the additions that the current owner made in twenty nineteen. I guess it was, and so, um, if, if Rita needs to bring up her design to say. Um, which ones of those, the changes were, if we need to see them again, we can. Um, does anybody want to see the design, the, that document again that shows the piece parts that were added in twenty nineteen? Okay, Madeline does, Victoria does, Rita.
Can I share my screen?
Yeah, try. Chris, does she need permission to sh- share her screen?
As host disabled, participant should screen sharing.
Chris? Can you give Rita Naravian? Approval to share screen?
Pasadena media, Chris, so as to differentiate.
Oh yeah, pass, yeah, pass, well, yeah. Chris Miller.
I think I'm in.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Let me bring it here.
Okay, so, so.
Can you see this?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, the long piece that's at the back, very back of the project. That's at the, um, uh, yeah, do you have the one that has the, the striped, the striped pieces, Rita?
Ah, you go. Can you see that?
Not yet. With, are you, yeah, okay.
Basically, the.
Can, can you make it a little bigger?
Oh, sure, let's focus in the area.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm working off two screens, so I'll be looking here.
Okay.
So, we basically have three structures on the lots. The first one is in the front and two of, two. The back here, seventeen seventy-five or seventeen seventy-one B and seventeen seventy-one A. Are the scope work and our scope of work is legalizing permitting. He better, the pink box in, in each of these units. Um, there's a ninety-four square foot addition in seventeen seventy-one B, which is this bigger one on top here. And then, and then also eighty-five square foot addition, which previously, storage unit.
Right.
Owner, uh, converted it to part of the unit, of the building. Living area and then also added some square footage so that it would be, uh, you can see going from one side of the building to the other. Then an addition here in the, um, uh, let's see, the northeast side of the, or south side. Southeast side of the, um, building of under four square foot addition. So, this has been going on for two years. First, uh, been going through, get, trying to get these. Yeah, these permitted so that we can have the owner, whole big issue is getting this, like, the new electrical meters and panels. Connected for both of these units and the power, the power department won't put, provide that. Um, permit till this ninety-four square foot addition, uh, in this building. That's legalized or permitted. Once we get that, then, and then we'll permit, then go through the permitting process as well. Which is what, again, the scope of work is for this and then going through the, uh, the entire yard modification process. That is what's, has led us to he, to this point.
So, right, so I just wanted to clarify to everybody, what we have in front of us is the, is the yard modification. Which means the fact that they don't have the right setbacks on their, on the two sides of the project here. Um, they don't have the right amount of setback. And then the two buildings, the, the one on the top, one on the bottom are only two feet or something, they're not.
Feet, four feet two inches, uh, distance, separation.
Which is.
Other than six feet.
Which is not, right, should be six feet, okay.
So, and that is why we've applied for the yard modification after we went through regional planning.
Right, right, so let me just say this to you guys because I want to try to keep this really as simple as we possibly can. The two pieces, the two sort of rectangular, more evenly rectangular pieces. That are, the one at the back of the building on the top and the one in the front of the building on the second one. Those two are built, um, by the new owner. Um, the, it, it, it appears to me as if the, um. The rea- the reason that the two buildings are not far enough apart happened when he filled in. What was an open space, right, for the house. The house didn't use to, goes in, in the, in the top, the top one. That says two-story building. That o- opening, the building used to go not where the red is.
And where the, that, where the hatch lines are.
Right, the hash line, the, the diagonal lines are where the building used to be. So he built that, this is the current owner, built in that piece. And because that extended the existing line of the building on the, the bottom part. Those, those two buildings are not, they're four feet two inches apart and not six feet apart the way they should be to code, okay? The, the, the other rectangular addition extends what used to be, well, what was when the building was built. Which was, when was it built, Rita?
Teen, oh, nineteen fifty-three.
Okay, so in nineteen fifty-three, the building was built without that red part that filled in the front. But it was already too close to the property line on that side, on the, the bottom side. Um, and so he just filled that in. At the back piece, what's a little deceiving and, which I've now clarified. This is seventeen feet long, you can see that, this long feet. But in nineteen fifty-three, it was built and it was, uh, fourteen feet long.
Fourteen by five, correct.
Right, fourteen by five, so.
Yes.
So the only piece really that should be colored here, if you will, is three feet. Of it, like where it says the five feet, but probably at the north, you could take the three feet there.
Yeah.
So what.
But wait a minute, in nineteen fifty, it was a storage unit. That is a different classification than, than livable space, so.
I, I understand, but in nineteen fifty-three, okay, Daniel, so in nineteen fifty-three, fourteen feet of that was already there.
As a storage unit.
Okay, but it was there. And it was against the, and it was however close that is to the one foot seven inches from the property line. So that's been there since nineteen fifty-three as part of the building.
It's three feet, it's, it's three feet five inches away from the property line.
All right, three feet five inches instead of, instead of four feet.
Right.
Um, and the reason that it can be four feet is because they're looking at this back unit as an ADU and the ADU has much smaller. So, the, what they, just to make sure that everybody understands, the majority of the part that's the tall red. Color, if you will, it, all but three feet of that was built in nineteen ninety, in nineteen fifty-three. And what we're reviewing is what he did in nineteen nineteen, nineteen nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Nine, twenty nineteen, okay, so, um, okay, so having said that. Um, Sylvia, you went and, and looked at the area, right?
Yeah, I went this afternoon. Um, the, the property behind them, there's no one living there, at least there appeared to be nobody living there. Um, I spoke to a neighbor at seventeen sixty-five, there's a couple duplexes around them.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody was home in the front one, the la- the back unit. Um, she's, she said, I'm not affected by the setback in the back. She, she did say, it just, there's a lot of density in that area and she just complained about the noise. Um, and that there's, you know, a lot of density.
Here's a, here's a top view, can you see this?
There.
This is a top view of this neighborhood.
Right, and there are a lot of.
Subject property, here's the property Jason's on site and then here, here's a property adjacent on the other side. Everyone's on top of each other.
Well, okay, but wait, so just, so we all are clear. Many of these are multifamily dwellings and we, we did a CUP not a couple of years ago, I guess. With a, on, um, I think that was on, was on Sierra Bonita, I think.
Yeah.
Um, then, and the woman that came to apply was, actually owned a bunch of the houses on Sierra, uh, the, the. Multifamily dwellings on Sierra Bonita. Um, anyway, so. What we, what we determined was that the people that are living there are renting. And that. The general. The setback piece, which is, what, what'd you say, three feet two inches instead of four feet? Um, yeah, is in there since nineteen fifty-three with the exception of three feet of it. So. Um. So, that's the, does anybody have questions? Rita, can you put that design back up that shows the diagonal line? Yeah, that one. Does. Okay, wait, I need to, can you stop sharing for a minute? Sorry, I need to see people.
Sure.
Chris, go ahead.
I've, I've got one and maybe, maybe it was answered last time, so I apologize if I'm being redundant, but is there any particular reason that the owner couldn't get these things permitted before he built them?
No, absolutely not.
That's a very good question.
No.
I had to come in after the fact.
Yeah.
Okay.
The owner's not here. Rita is a consultant.
We're the, we're the design firm, the architectural firm.
Yeah.
We're, we're here to fix the problems.
All right.
Yeah, the answer's absolutely not. Um, Victoria?
Okay, um, understanding that I wasn't here.
Oh, you're next.
Say it again?
I was, I just said Daryl, you're next, go ahead.
Okay, I wasn't here last, uh, meeting, but I did read through all these materials and seeing this image was helpful. Um, but it seems to me, and this is just me looking at this with new eyes, that this is exactly what we try to prevent from happening. And in this particular case, this particular property owner decided to do whatever he did without seeking proper approvals. And now that the, and now that he needs an upgraded electrical panel, the county has caught up with the fact that he's improperly permitted.
Right.
My question is this, Diane, maybe would be the best person. If we want to dissuade this kind of, um, incident from happening in the future. And we, we, or let's just say, I were to vote not to approve this. What happens to this existing property as it relates to the upgrade of the electrical panel?
My. You know, I don't know for sure. My experience tells me that regional planning will approve it anyway. And go ahead Sylvia.
Well, I was just, that example of that, of that property on Coolidge. Where we had a neighbor who built a guest house and, um, the county ended up putting a lien on the property and they had to actually. Put it back to a garage, so, um. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna get approved, but I, I, I also struggle with the fact that. Um, you know, we, we need to prevent things like this from happening. And I don't know, I was talking to Diane about this earlier, you know?
Daryl, you're next, sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. So Rita, you said you're part of the design company with all of this, right?
Yes.
So, this whole thing was designed and built by you guys before?
No, no.
When did you, when did you get involved in this? Let me ask this.
I got involved in it after it was, after the additions were done in two thousand nineteen. And the owner needed to get these additions permitted in order to get the.
So.
Electric meters installed and running. Right now, I think he's running off a temporary, and he's got tenants in these, uh.
So, so he is a business owner who knew he needed to get permitting done. Who, and if he didn't, well, then that's his. I don't see why he wasn't doing this before he moved ahead. I'm a single, uh, uh, I only own my own home and I'm trying to do stuff here and I get permits before I spend a dime.
Yep.
And I don't appreciate that we are being spent, we are spending so much time on this of our own lives. To go for the fact that the guy did not do his job. He has tenants, that's not my fault. He has responsibilities, those are his, not ours. I am not pleased with this at all. I, I, I'm done because this, this is, this is really on his, on his part, and if he made this. Much of a mistake, he needs to deal with it, not us, fix it.
So, um, so we're at a point where we have. We have a couple of different options. There are, as we all know, and Daryl and Sylvia and I, uh, share your frustration. Oh, Billy, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm just gonna make an assumption here that the only reason. That the county is requiring them to upgrade the electrical for the tenants is because they have new additions. If they didn't do any changes to the original structures. Then.
Sure about that.
I don't, I don't know that.
I don't know the reasoning.
I didn't, I didn't, you know, I put an air conditioning in one of my buildings and I had to do it, so I don't know, I didn't change the print.
So what is, so that's because you added air conditioning, what are the, what did they add to these buildings?
I don't know, Billy, it doesn't, it, it honestly doesn't. Effect either, so here's the deal. In Altadena, everybody can do whatever they want to do without permits until they get caught. That is just the way it is. We, we, in, in the past couple of, bunch of months, hang on, in the back, past bunch of months, we've had quite a number of these. That have come up that things were already built. And something happened, one place the people wanted to sell their house or get a loan or something and the county stopped them, so. This is, this is the, I'm not condoning it, I've gotten permits for everything I've done to both of the homes I own. But that's, that's the situation and people can make a choice. Um, whether to get permitted or not and then get caught, okay, so it happens a whole bunch. It shouldn't happen because people should be honest, um, but they're not, so all we have to do, and I don't really. Have a, you know, Sylvia and I don't have skin in this fight, so what, whatever you guys decide to, to do. Is what we decide to do, Daryl?
So the subject at hand, are we going to give him the? We're gonna give him the waiver, is that what we're asking here?
I, no.
Well, that's what we're gonna vote on.
That's, that's the question before us, the question before us is the waiver. I, I, I don't need a whole lot of stories, what is the question at hand that we need to do today?
Well.
What is it that we're doing here for this right now? Direct and to the point, what do we need to do?
Give him time to answer, dude, give him time to answer.
I explained at the beginning of the, I explained at the beginning of the discussion. What we're being asked to do is to recommend either approval or denial of the setback. This, the, the yard modification on the two sides of the back building because those are too close. He made changes and those are too close. They were close to begin with and he added to the, to the, the. Length, the length of what, what is already there, okay?
Okay, so I'm.
We're also being asked about the distance between the two buildings, which is four foot, two inches instead of six feet. And we can recommend denial of the project, there's no problem with doing that.
I recommend, I make a motion to recommend denial of this project.
Okay, so Sylvia has two versions of a, of a motion to make. And one is for denial and one is for approval. With an explanation to the, to regional planning that we're not happy, so. We can, let's do, I guess, go ahead Sylvia, let's start with the one that says denial and we'll just vote and see.
Hang on Diane.
Didn't have anybody second the motion.
We have to, he made a motion, so we either need a second or not, and now we have a second by Nick. I'm just saying. It's not a proper motion, but that's okay.
It's not a proper motion.
Not a proper motion?
No, the verbiage, I think she means, I think she means the verbiage, Daryl, so I'm gonna. Diane, we lost you.
Sorry, um, Nick, Nick seconded it, so. Daryl has recommended that. We deny the project, which is not our ability to do, but I guess if we're gonna.
You just said that we could.
It's denial of, it's a denial.
It's a recommendation to the town council. We have verbiage for that, Nick, if we'll let Sylvia read the, read the motion that is written out that says. Recommend denial of the project, go ahead Sylvia.
Okay, in the matter of project number R P P L two thousand twenty zero one zero. One, seven, one yard slash, um, CSD. Uh, modification minor CUP to legalize two unpermitted re- rear residential units with a yard modification located at seventeen seventy-three Oxford Avenue. I moved to the land use committee, recommend denial of the project to the town council.
I, I am willing to make that motion.
No.
You can second that.
Sylvia made the.
Fine, I will ma- I will second that motion.
Daryl seconds it, okay, all those in favor of, um.
Well, we have to see if there's any discussion.
Oh yeah, is there any discussion, sorry?
And public comments?
No public comments.
Uh, it looks like Alan has, uh.
Actually, I, I just have to, uh, agree with Daryl. A businessman making a decision two years ago and then coming to us, uh, two years later. Because the county caught him, is telling me that he did this pretty much in our face. Under the assumption that he could always get approval, uh, in arrears.
Well, actually, we haven't come to you two years later, this is a process that I've gone through in order to get here. This has been in motion for two years.
Right.
I've gone, I've gone through planning, I've gone through building department, I've gone through. Planning again to get through this yard modification and now I'm here.
If it were the next day, it would still be after the work was done. When he very, very clearly had to know that he was, uh, breaking the law when he did it.
Okay.
And, uh, the point of us establishing, in other words, if we let everyone go. When do we start enforcing the rules that, that were made after a lot of, uh, discussion and consideration?
Okay, Amy?
I just wanted to make the point that if we're looking exactly at, regardless of what happened in the past. If this had been, and I know that that's probably a sticking point for some. If this had been done fifteen years ago and now somebody was coming to us. Perhaps we wouldn't be quite as angry about it because we would say, oh, fifteen years ago, there was a different situation. But I just wanted to point out that the difference between the setbacks, which is theoretically the thing we're looking at. Is three point five, three feet, five inches to four feet, which is a seven inch difference in one place. And then four feet, two inches, not six. So I just wanted to point out that the thing that we're being asked to think about is relatively minor. In terms of some of the other projects that we've looked at, asking for. Modifications on the CUP for, uh, site, site, not sightline, but, um, property line distances. So I just wanted to point that out, um, I don't like it that the person did the work without the permit, but. I'm just not, I just wanted to point out the fact that it seems like that there's an, if we. Ascribe negative intent to the owner, which we can certainly do. I'm not sure that we can, you know, move forward on projects, you know, deciding that we like the owner or we don't like the owner. And the way they behave, because I think people will still do things outside the rules. And then they will ask to get the rules modified, but when the modification is not egregious. Right, is that, is that the thing that we should be worried about, rather than whether we like the way that the person did it? Because I don't know that us saying no to this project or any other project is going to stop people from doing that.
Well, and I think.
Just a point of, of way of thinking about what we're being asked to.
Right, that's right, Amy, and I think if we look at it as if they came to us before they made the change and said. We want to add three feet onto the back of this one building that is already there. And has been there since nineteen fifty-three, and so we're gonna add three feet on to the problem where it's. What did we say, ten inches different or something, um, than what it should be at four feet? Uh, and we're gonna add another, I don't know what it is, five feet or six feet in the front of the buildings. And, you know, we, for those of us that have been on town council for a long time, you can think about. If somebody came to us and said, this is what we want to do. You know, we're looking at another project on Sonola where they want to add ninety feet along the property line. And that's of real concern, this is three feet along the property line in the back and a couple, five feet on the front. So if you think about it, if he did come to us and ask us about it. What would we, you know, how would we have looked at it? And I agree, Amy, and I feel everybody's pain, believe me. I've been doing this for a long time and it gets, absolutely gets my goat. Especially since I'm one of the people like Daryl is that gets permits. But, so that's just another way to look at it. I don't vote, guys, so I'm not, I don't, you know, I'm not voting, so. So we have a, uh, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion, Sylvia?
Yeah, I thought that the, the setback was four feet and they were at one, one foot, seven inches.
On, on the, on the side, yeah, they're at one foot. Yeah, and I believe that chart.
Five or six inches.
Inches, on the south side.
Yeah, it's not just few inches, you know.
At the back, the back setback is.
Yeah, four foot setback that should be there as opposed to what's there now is one foot, seven inches.
Right, and it's, it was, it was fifteen feet, just an FYI, fourteen feet, sorry. Fourteen feet of one foot, seven inches since nineteen fifty-three. And now it's seventeen feet at.
Three feet, five inches.
Yeah, yeah, so they added, it's like seven, so anyway, I'm just saying, right? The fourteen feet of that was in the wrong place since nineteen fifty-three. And on the side yard as well, except for the part that he filled in. Was also in that same, however many feet it is, close to the property line. So I'm just saying, you know, we have in our CSD that you can add on. You know, on the same plane as your building for a certain number of feet. Because we didn't want people to have to be jigga jogging their stuff, so. Now, my question is if they came to us and said, this has been here since nineteen fifty-three, can I add three feet to it? Or, you know, that's just another way to look at it. I don't have a vote, guys, so you, and we'll do whatever you want to do.
Can we call for the question?
Wait, I have, I have a question, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the building in question are housing units, right?
Yeah, uh-huh. Okay, Victoria?
I just, that, just along those lines, you made the comment that the rear setback is less. Because this is now an ADU, but it wasn't an ADU before?
No, it, it's not an ADU, it's, it's a third unit on this property.
The county's, the county's counting it as an ADU, so if this was one year ago, this would have been. A much longer setback.
And quite frankly, one year ago, the property would have been overbuilt and they probably would have made them take the back unit down. But now there's an ADU rule from the state of California that we have to comply with. So what they're, what they're doing is they're counting that back unit as an ADU. And so instead of whatever our, like twenty-five feet or something setback it is in the back, it's. Yeah, four feet for an ADU. Okay, um, okay, can we take a vote now the discussion's over?
I have a question. So, so if this gets denied, what would be the recommendation?
It's not, okay, we're, what we're gonna do, what we do as a, as a group, or as I explained to you, we're a volunteer group. That rec- that, you know, tries to represent the community. And so what we do is we say to regional planning, look, this is what, you know, this is what we feel like we really want to recommend to you. And then regional planning does what they want to do, they're the people that make the real decision. Okay, all those in favor of recommending to the Altadena Town Council that the project be denied? Say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, raise your hands, because I need to count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, ten, eleven, okay? All those opposed, raise your hand, please, all those opposed. Two, three. Okay. Uh, abstain? I feel like I'm missing somebody, did we lose somebody?
What happened to Doug? Looks like Doug left.
Oh, Doug left, okay.
Doug's right there, he's right there.
Oh, no, he's right there, uh, sorry.
I'm sorry, so I have, can, can all those in favor say aye, and I'm gonna count one more time, Billy, if you can count two, that'd be great. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, ten, now I only have ten.
I have eleven.
Eleven, okay, you're right, okay, and all those opposed? Three, okay, all right.
That makes fourteen, you not voting makes fifteen, that's correct.
Okay, all right, fine. Okay, so we will, um, we're gonna recommend to the Altadena Town Council that the project. That we recommend to, they will recommend to regional planning as a project be denied. Okay, thanks very much, all right, now, moving along. So, um, Rita, we will revisit this in two weeks at the town council meeting. And the ATC, I mean, the land use committee will be recommending to the town, to the town council that they recommend denial. Of the project to regional planning. Okay, so. I, I do not have any general public comment. I did not receive anything, um, so I'm gonna move on to census tract reports and Billy.
Hi, yeah, um, forty-six oh two, I just have a couple of projects has come up, that's gonna be coming in from the land use. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of awareness to it right now, um, and, and Nick already knows of this. Uh, the planner was supposed to send me some, um, visual images that I could have, uh, screen shared quickly. But I didn't get them in time, but basically I'll just give you a quick thing, what we're looking at, there's. Uh, there's a property on Marengo where there's three houses, one behind each other, facing Marengo. But the house in the middle, which is really strange. Requires different setbacks than the house in front and the house behind, simply because, um. On the house in front and the house behind, what would be considered side yard setbacks, in the house in the middle would be considered a rear yard setback. So, um, these houses were built in the nineteen sixties and fifties, and so there's an area of the middle because of the. Um, rotation of the, uh, building compared to the others. That, um, it would be in retroactive CUP, minus CUP, to match what's already there. The second, the second project we have coming up, so, um, I will get, as soon as I get information and as soon as we've done some. Um, uh, more background on that, I'll send it out to you all. Um, and then the second one is, it's very similar to the, uh, project we did for. The Theological Society, it's a fifty, thirty-six resident, senior residential unit. Uh, facility, uh, twenty-five forty-four Al Molino. And, uh, they want just to continue use of their CUP, but like the Theological Society, they let it expire. Which now requires them to, uh, to have a hearing to continue the use of the facility. But again, it's not a, it's not a new CUP. They should have, uh, applied for it prior to it expiring, but they didn't. So now we will, that will be coming up as well, so I'm just giving you a heads up on two, two projects is coming in our census tract and to keep an eye out for them.
Okay, and Billy, make sure you get the existing conditions on the, um, on the second one.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the things I've had, I spoke to the, I spoke to the planner, requesting everything, and they said it's up to the. The applicant to get me that information, and I'm like, but if I get it from the applicant, they can actually be. the applicant to get me that information, and I'm like, but if I get it from the applicant, they can actually be selective on what they forward me. It's better I get it from the planner, so anyway, working on it.
Okay. Okay, can I get a?
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, yeah. Okay, thanks very much, thanks everybody.
Who made the motion and who seconded? Daryl made the motion, who seconded? Sylvia, okay.
Alright, thanks everybody, I appreciate everybody's patience and hard work on these projects, we have tried and tried and tried to explain to new folks that this is not easy. This is not an easy job, um, and there are a lot of moving parts, and so I appreciate everybody's honesty and trying to do the best for Altadena, so thanks very much. Alright, take care, bye.
Thanks Diane, thanks Chris.